I hereby call the Brockton School Committee to order, it being time, Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. I would ask you, please, stand and let's salute our American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I want to read the following into the record if I could. Welcome to the open meeting, to an open meeting of the school committee. This is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note the hearing of visitors is included, limited to three minutes. If you have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast, Channel 98, and 1071 HD version, and also online, the following link, which is www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. I will need to establish a quorum. I'll just go around. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yep.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair is here as well. We've established a law for quorum. We will now go into the agenda. Agenda number two is hearing of visitors, and Melinda Campbell has indicated that there are no signed-in hearing of visitors. So we will respectfully go on to Agenda Three, which actually is the consent agenda, and as you know, we can take them out, we can take them collectively, whatever the will of the school committee. They are A, B, C, and D. Are there any members of the school committee that would like to take them out, or would we entertain a motion to take them collectively at this time? Will the committee?
Motion to accept items A, B, C, and D, as written.
As collectively. So, motion on the floor by Mr. Sullivan. It was properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. If I could just read them into the record, that would be great. A is the approval of the amendments Superintendent's Contract Subcommittee Meeting dated March 21, 2023. B is the approval of the amendments, which is the Finance Subcommittee Meeting for March 21st, 2023. C is the request for authorizations to submit proposals and expenditures of funds. FY23 increase in funding for the DESI Early College Incubator Grant in the amount of $95,385. And then finally, D is the acceptance of the Human Resources notifications, as follows: Appointment certified personnel, appointments non-certified, and then finally, it's personal actions, which is leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. There is a motion, it was properly seconded, to take them collectively, all in favor. Please raise your hand. All opposed, kindly raise your hand. It does pass unanimously. So we will now move on to Agenda Four this evening, which is the reporter Superintendent Schools, Mike Thomas. Mr. Superintendent, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. So I want to welcome everyone. Our student rep, Abby, is not here with us tonight, so we're going to move to item number two, which is Early College in a Dual Enrollment Update from Dr. Sean Boone. Sean, welcome. I want to thank you for all the work you're doing with all our early college partners, and this is, this is a lot of work, and his work with Dr. Connors, Melissa Sheppard, who's the head of guidance at Brockton High School, and also the Guidance Counselor at all high schools. He's been doing a lot of work with them. Champion, Edison, The Promise, and Huntington as well. So, Sean, thank you for all you're doing. I know this is not an easy task, because, you know, you're approached all the time, because we don't have a designation of one college, and it's kind of a moving target with DESI, with early college, that really has not, you know, there's not a clear path for early college and dual enrollment. It's always changing, and Sean works very closely with DESI. I think it's Nicole Smith. Is she the associate?
Kristen Hunt is the director.
Kristen, okay, all right. So, Sean, I can give us an update. I know you were here a few months ago, but this is exciting, but just about the challenges and the things that are working well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. Good evening, distinguished school committee members, and Mayor Sullivan, Vice Chair Ayers. I am, and special good evening to the community and those watching and those present. We offer early college courses. E.E. Cummings said, "It takes courage to grow up and become who you really are." We see this courage in our students every day, and by offering early college to all students, the superintendent's vision, the school committee's support, and the entire Brockton community's audacity for hope, we take a courageous step worth taking, because it enables students to grow up and become who they really are. And it always, I'm always mindful of when I was a 12th grader in a first-year teacher's African-American history classroom, and Ms. Sharon Walder talked, I talked about wanting to join the military, and she said, "That is good, but first I want you to go to college." We empower students to reach their full potential by providing them with access to higher education, goal-setting, and a trajectory on a path towards success. I heard that some of our early college students are already planning their retirement. They're getting a head, a head start on their education, after all. So for those in the room and for those watching, I want to remind us of the differences between early college and dual enrollment. Dual enrollment is when a student takes a college course either by himself or with a high school cohort and earns less than 12 credits. Early college is when a student takes a college course with a high school cohort and earns 12 credits or more, and that is a significant distinction. Brockton Public Schools is a current pathway district for early college, and this semester, we piloted with two higher education institutions. In August of this year, we will submit Part A of our early college designation application with Massa Sway Community College, and the following year, we will submit designation application with UMass Dartmouth, UMD. In the fall of 2023, we will pilot courses, adding courses with Bridgewater State University and Worcester State University, as we scale up our early college initiatives. Our vision is clear: to provide students with the best diverse collegiate opportunities, increase our high school and graduation attendance and graduation rates, and enhance our students' academic and occupational success. As we work towards this vision, we recognize the importance of building strong relationships with local higher education institutions. This is where the Brockton Public School, or BPS Strategic Plan 4.1 comes, comes in, as it calls for the development of relationships with local institutes of higher education to expand dual enrollment and develop early college and dual enrollment pathways for all students to earn college credit regardless of physical, learning, or social-emotional needs. That's our Strategic Plan 4.1. By collaborating with local colleges and universities, we create more opportunities for our students to take college-level courses while still in high school. This not only helps our students and their families save money on tuition, but it also helps students get a head start on their college education. And we know that students who take college courses while in high school are more likely to attend and graduate from college. But our vision doesn't stop there. We want to make sure that all of our students, regardless of their needs or abilities, have access to these opportunities. That's why we are committed to developing early college and dual enrollment pathways that are inclusive and that meet the needs of all students. We know that students learn in different ways, and we are dedicated to creating a program that meets the needs of all learners. Whether a student needs additional support to succeed in college-level courses, as is a testament to one of our students who is on an IEP, taking a course, or a student who has a physical disability, we will work with all of our students and provide the resources and support to be successful. Ultimately, our goal is to prepare our students for success in college and in their chosen careers. By providing them with early college opportunities, we are giving them a head start on their education and helping them develop the skills they need to be successful. And I really must thank the superintendent for his vision, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Connors, Deputy Finance, our Early College Guidance Counselor, Dr. McNeil Pleasant, and the many, many supporters who are in our village and working hard. We have seen remarkable success from our spring of 2022 to spring of 2023 in our participation and enrollment, as is a testament on this screen. As a snapshot, in spring of 2022, we had 10 students participating with one IHE partner, MCC. Those 10 students were enrolled in two courses, so we had 20 enrollments. This semester, this spring semester, we have 87 students participating in early college. Over 10 courses, 107 enrollments, that's 20 of our students taking early college, or taking two courses. As I mentioned, we are piloting, or we are piloting this semester, an ESL course, two courses with Massa Sway, where we take the students, the ESL 1 and 2 students to Massa Sway to receive their courses. This semester, we are also working with two IHE partners, MCC and UMD, over four high schools: Champion High School, Brockton High School, Promise High School, and Edison High School. We are also piloting an advanced Spanish course with UMD for heritage students. Both the pilots for ESL and for the Spanish, we will scale up in the fall, and I'll show you a little, a little bit about what that, a little bit what that looks in a moment. Early college in the Commonwealth is focused on students participating regardless of past academic achievement, and that really, although I hear many times that Mass, the Commonwealth is behind in early college, they really are so far ahead. Few states actually allow students to participate regardless of past academic achievement. We want to ensure that all of our students have access regardless of their background or socioeconomic status, and have equal access to participate in the program and benefit from its advantages. As you can see from the data, and particularly the middle piece there, we have a robust representation from diverse racial and ethnic background, and we need to ensure robust representation for our white and Asian students as well. When you ask, how did we move from 10 students participating to 87 students participating, and in a moment, I'll show you students who have expressed interest for the fall of 2023, there are a few things that stand out. First and foremost, the office of early college, and particular attention to a director, an early college guidance counselor, and the promoting of, by guidance counselors to all students of early college. Second is the connection to the early college program and college campus, and those two pictures you will see are on the screen. School board members, you should have a copy of the, let's see, of the Brockton Public School Course Guide, Early College Course Guide, which, this is the first time that Brockton Public Schools has offered an early college course guide that highlights our courses and our partners, primary partners, as well as the flyer that we use to promote early college activities and opportunities to our students and to our parents. Third, I would say, is the marketing and raising the awareness of early college programs. Fourth, I would say, is, as a critical factor, is the interest and the word of mouth by students talking about early college. And last, I would say, is the extreme support across the district for early college opportunities. Don't take my word for it. Let's listen to some of the impact of early college. Do I just press play on that, or? Thank you.
My name is Lina Flores, and I'm in 12th grade, I'm a senior.
My name is Marta Oshadomike, and I'm a senior.
My name is Susanna Vossores, and I'm a senior.
My name is Noemi Afira Correa, and my job title here at Brockton High is Early College Support Specialist and also peer tutor in core learning.
A lot of high schools never get a chance to have sociology.
The students are excited, they're gaining, they're earning college credits while they're here, so basically dual enrollment. So I believe that it's a successful program for any of these kids.
It allowed me to see more into, like, what the business was more like, just like the introduction of it, like certain topics, like the marketing aspect and stuff like that, I think, got me ready to, like, for classes that I would have to take in the future, so that I already have some background information on it.
Through the early college program, like, I was able to just get a taste of a real college class, how vigorous the structure will be, how I need to manage myself, and I wanted to get an introductory course.
I wanted to have a better insight about business and see if that was a right fit for me, and also because of the college benefits. Thought, like, it was going to save me a lot of money, so.
I liked my professor. I thought it was, like, he allowed me to see, like, how the schedule would be, like, in college, because usually here in high school, we have, like, longer deadlines.
Take it, take it, take this program, just get every opportunity that you can. You got free courses, so you know you're not gonna, like, you're ending, you're gonna have to take them anyways, so, when you get to college. So just take it now while it's free, and you have a great support system, you'll have your friends with you, so I think.
I totally recommend. You're gonna save thousands, thousands of dollars.
Them being in here and able to get a high school diploma, as well as getting, gaining access into college while they're here, I find that to be a great benefit. And they can go home and tell their parents about it, like, they're college students from, let's say, Cape Verde, I'm from Cape Verde, they're high school students from Cape Verde, and saying, "Wow, I'm in Brockton High and I'm a college student."
Yeah. Yeah. It's interesting.
So, and a huge thank you to our partner teachers who are supporting students across the district. That is, this is the first time we have instituted a partner teacher as a wraparound service, in addition to our early college counselor, in addition to the paper.co as a 24/7 tutoring service to support students. So, this semester, we implemented a survey for college interest for the fall, and part of the reason we did this is so that we can provide preliminary numbers and requests for courses to our IHE partners. We've had over 700 students participate in the early college interest, with students expressing interest in over 900 courses for the fall. So, these numbers may be a little tough, but there are a few things I wanted to point out, is our early college experience. Over about, over 200 students coming in, rising ninth graders, expressed interest in wanting to take an early college course, early college experience course. Those students would be part of our process of onboarding students into the early college program. And counselors are right now working with students to build and actually register them into these courses, so that we confirm up our numbers with our IHE partners. You'll see that we have, we will be, as I mentioned, scaling up. So currently, we offer an ESL, we were piloting ESL 1, two courses, Pronunciation, ESL 1 and Pronunciation, and a course as well with students. We may offer two courses based on the interest in that. One of the challenges we experienced this particular semester, we had four students, we had to unenroll because of the vaccination requirement. As you may know, the community college presidents have withdrew that, so starting in their summer session, started their summer session, there'll be no more vaccine, vaccine requirement. So we were looking at some of the, some of our lessons learned in this experience. You'll notice that we had 154 students express interest in the UMass Dartmouth, Dartmouth Business Pathway, so significant amounts of students in those numbers. And then we request particular cohorts based on the IHE, so many of the IHEs have cohort sizes at 25. You'll notice one, for the ESL, for instance, is 17, summer 22, so making sure we can support students. And so that will help determine what the overflow for Bridgewater State University, for Worcester State University, to support in terms of courses and cohorts as well. These are offered in a range of modalities for students. You saw the video, two in-class, or two in-person classes, one was a psychology, one was a sociology class, and those classes happened here at Brockton High School. We also offer, as you know, online, and we are in that connection, getting students to the campus, the Massa Sway ESL course that happens over at Massa Sway. We're anticipating between 450 and 500 students actually being scheduled for classes in the fall of 2023, across the district.
What was that number again?
450 to 500 students. So, I have shared these models before. We currently have three pathways. So we have currently the UMass Dartmouth Pathway, and I'll show you just that visual, the UMass Dartmouth Pathway, where students can take either business or liberal arts education. Those are the two pathways with UMD, and then we generally have what's, what I would call the mass transfer block, which really looks like general education courses, or also a liberal arts opportunity. And we want students to, when they enter the program, take 12, at least 12 credits, but up to, as the district, up to 30 credits. We do have a model here that we have, in preliminary discussions with Massa Sway, looked at what an associate's degree would look like, and so if we get, and as we look to getting students in the ninth grade, 10th grade, enrolled, taking some of those general ed requirements, when we are able to roll this out next year and really advertise and publicize it, students will still be ahead in getting those credits, because they still have to receive the span, the speech courses and the English comp courses, and sociology and the psychology, but moving towards the associate's degree as well, as a model. Brockton Public Schools is also developing its own early college curriculum that we and our teachers can potentially teach, focused on personality, self-assessment, career, interest, and inventory, college planning, social-emotional learning, critical thinking and creative thinking, written and verbal communication, and study skills improvements. Part of what you have received and approved today in terms of the incubator, the incubator grant, we received an additional $95,000 on top of the $200,000 for this year, so we are planning for some summer programmings. We're looking and going into contract currently with ESL 1 and 2, so we want to offer summer programs to students in ESL 1 and 2, and then some other courses as well, so that students can get ahead and be prepared for early college and its robustness in the coming And then finally, some challenges and areas of improvement. I have had many, many calls and webinars and convenings with DESI, and thanks to Dr. Connors, who's been in many of those meetings as well, and, and we have talked about the challenges that Brockton Public has, or challenges that districts across the Commonwealth are having. And so part I know of what DESI Early College Office is doing is, next week, actually, going to be speaking to many, many folks in two different sessions to look at policy, so that these policies can be more ubiquitous. It is, we are in the area of both K-12, but also IHEs, and trying to really mold those policies together can be a challenge. Scheduling can be a challenge. Funding can be a challenge, ensuring that we are, have funding that can sustain and that we can support the, the scale-up of our students with partner teachers, with MTAs, with PERS, to really support students across the district with early college. Ultimately, ultimately Brockton Public School may consider its own early college high school to compete with the charter, to compete with the loss of students in a specific and targeted space, such as on a campus of Massa Sway Community College, or another local college, to really designate and, and be a wall-to-wall program for early college. We, as a district, currently exist as a program. Promise High School, all of their, as you know, all of their ninth grade students took American Sign Language 1. We had about 23 taking American Sign Language 2, so that would be sort of as a wall-to-wall promise career in college, but looking specifically at a designated space for early college, where students know this, where students are, but we can build the schedule around the higher education schedule, around the local grad requirements, to really effectively promote and, and, and support students. Thank you. I can take any questions you may have.
Thanks.
Who's the mayor?
The mayor had to step out, so I'll call on people.
Correct.
(laughing) Ms. Ellis.
First of all, for somebody that has forged my own career in higher education and worked in the industry for over 30 years, I am extremely impressed with the work that you've done, Dr. Boone. Like, honestly, I have to tell you, sometimes, meeting in the middle between K through 12 and higher red is like herding cats. It just, it is. It's difficult, it's climbing a hill of sand, it's smiling until your teeth are dry, and trying to get consensus from both parties, it really is. So I want to, you know, I want to say thank you to you for that.
Thank you.
And one question I have is, the mass transfer pathway, is that part of the mass transfer program, like the block program? So I know Massa Sway Community College falls in that automatically, because you sign up for that, but would that be for students that are just at Massa Sway, or does UMass Dartmouth also participate in that program? Because they're a four-year institution versus two-year.
Correct. They do participate as well.
Okay.
So most of the state institutions do participate.
Perfect. And then the other question I had is, I do, I totally understand the difference between dual enrollment and early college, but I guess my question is, I want to make sure I say this right. I guess my question is, are we, are we pushing the early childhood versus the dual enrollment for the additional, the 12-plus credits? It seems like we are, but I feel like with the dual enrollment, in past years, there's been sort of like, not a negative, you know, what was happening is, is there were some schools that were participating and some that weren't, and so, meaning colleges. And so then it became like, hmm, you know, is, is, you know, dual enrollment really for us? And then should we be pulling down, and I'm saying this from a financial perspective, at the time, should we be pulling down Pell funds for students that are in high school? So that's where my question comes in for grant funding. Do you feel the state is going to be able to intercede on that? Are you seeing promising conversations, or hearing promising conversations in that regard?
I, I don't look at dual enrollment as the traditional dual enrollment.
Okay.
And so as you may know, DESI has a dual enrollment office and an early college office.
Yeah.
And they have the CDEP funds, the Commonwealth Dual Enrollment Funding, which has at times supported the district in terms of classes. I would say the Pell funds, we don't, don't really support what we have done. And Massa Sway may use some, and I think actually last year, I know there was some funding source that they had sort of retargeted to another school that needed it, because we, we did have the funds. We had the, we have the Harbor 1 grant, so Harbor 1 supports a cohort, then we also had the CDEP funds as well. So, we, we have had students who have said, you know, "I'd like to take early college courses, I'm taking one course, this isn't really what I, what I wanted to do." And we experienced that from the pathway with UMD from last semester to this semester. And so those students really were engaged in an early, in a dual enrollment. So if they're less than the 12 credits, then they are, they are, and I'm not necessarily answering your question, but if they're less than 12 credits, then they really are dual I guess, if, maybe if you can rephrase it, because I guess I'm not, I want to make sure I understand your question.
You actually did answer my question.
Okay.
I was just curious whether that was another avenue, honestly, for us to pursue for funding, for students that, if we run out of funds, you know, if we run out of funds, they can actually, you know, my understanding is they can pull from Pell if they need to. And I just wouldn't want a student to ever be denied access, because we ran out of funding or the state was unwilling to give us the funding or whatnot. So I was just curious if that ever came into play in the past year with students from Massa Sway and UMass, but it sounds like it did, and they kind of diverted those funds because we, to other students, because we had them.
Right.
So you did actually answer my question.
Okay.
Which is great.
Right.
And then the other thing I was going to say is, the 87 students we have now, do you think the increase of students is because there isn't that academic caveat that they have? do you think the increase of students is because there isn't that academic caveat that they have to be at a certain GPA? Do you think that's one of the reasons we're getting such a big response versus in the past where they had to be at a certain academic standing to even be eligible for these classes?
I think that is definitely some of it. You will find, and I think part of the, you know, one of the challenges that I put up there is really that talking to so Desi and then talking to the Commission for Higher Learning in the Commonwealth. For instance, Massasoit has Accuplacer and prerequisites, which is very much what we have, you know, when we are on Desi calls, it's very much not what Desi would, would like. And we know through some partners with, for instance, with other community colleges, they have sort of this agreement that students in early college will not be required to have multiple measures or Accuplacer. We haven't gotten there yet. UMass Dartmouth does not have any of those requirements. Worcester State doesn't have any of those requirements. So looking to ensure that we are aligning, you know, with partners or placing students where they will be accepted and have that opportunity to have those courses. So it's, it's a, you know, it's definitely an obstacle, you know, just to speak sort of plainly about making sure that, that students do have the access. But I would definitely say it's part of it. And I think our guidance counselors are doing a great job in talking about, you know, whereas with dual enrollment, and one of the, one of the things, reasons we didn't have too much issues with funding, just to sort of back up, is because we pay per, per class or for the cohort. So cohort of twenty-five, you know, is five thousand students versus individual students with the, with the public institutions. But we have students who are excelling. And so we've gotten some waivers with some partners for some prereqs, and those students have passed, you know, excelled in the, in the course. And so we're really trying to get them to look at this sort of broad picture of, you know, is students successful? So why would there be other sort of place or Accuplacer, multiple measures that we have to go on? So really that alignment, it's really overall the policy alignment that, that, you know, we sort of wrestle with between what Desi is talking about for early college and then, you know, what, what some individual institutions are trying to promote and talk to their accreditors about.
Well, thank you again. Amazing job over the past years from the first presentation that you gave to us. Amazing progress with you, and thank you, Dr. Connors, as well. Nice job.
Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. As you know, I was excited when this first came out. Not a lot of students have an opportunity or have the financial capability to go to college. So giving them this opportunity while they're in high school is amazing, and it gives them a jump start for those that have to get into the working world. You know, family, not everyone can take four years or two years and go to school. Couple of questions. This is pretty impressive. So I'm all about keeping it visible. Get the word out. So that's, I'm also curious, you know, from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, you have eighty-seven, and then we're gonna jump into the hundreds. Around four hundred was that, which is pretty impressive. Are we capped out at a certain number, or can we just keep adding to this program as far as students? Are we, can we, do we have to stop when we get to a certain number, or we can just keep adding?
We can keep adding. I mean, there is a lot of interest in Brockton and BPS doing early college, and they've continued to stress, Desi has continued to stress that in terms of designations, partners. BPS is the only district that really has three, that would have three, four partners that we're working with. I mean, we're, you know, we're a large district. And even some of the, some of the districts that have been doing this for a while and doing it very well, we are, you know, have about two hundred, two hundred and fifty, Durfee, two hundred and fifty students, but a hundred and twenty-five active, right? So we are really at those levels. A lot of interest. We do not have a cap. And, but there'll be some students who cannot take a class because of their schedule. So we are trying to, with our partners, create as many classes as we can based on the interests. So at a hundred and twenty-five students, if we can work across three partners who can offer courses throughout, throughout the day, the better for our students and the better for our scheduling. Speaking with our virtual learning and, and academy with about what class specifically can those students take? That can be one-to-one matches, so English comp, to really, you know, making sure all students have access. And then we'd work specifically with a partner who can do the virtual and do it well for them. So that's really how, how I've approached it. And so Superintendent Thomas said, you know, there's a lot, there are a lot of institutions, higher education institutions that want to partner with us. And so being able to use that, those partnerships to support a specific school and the needs of the school. So one of the things we learned with, with Promise is that ASL one didn't work virtually. And it was as simple as, and you'll laugh, it was, it was as simple as student, students were told, it was said that students were not participating. And so when Carrie Clark, the Director of Professional Development, visited the school and she is, she signs in ASL, she said the students are participating, their computers are too close to their faces, so the faculty members couldn't see their hands. And so we went and transitioned that ASL course from one institution to Massasoit that could offer it in person. And so working with schools and with students specifically, you know, to tweak, to twist, to shift, to reframe as we can and as we need to, to ensure we don't have to put a cap, that if a student wants a class, we can potentially get that class to the student if, if we can fit it in their schedule.
So, Dr. Boone, what if a student starts at Brockton High and they take pretty much a lot of the courses, and they're just missing maybe one or two to finish their associates? Are they able to go directly to that college that they were working with? Is this transferable for them to be able to get the associates? Where if they weren't able to finish a class due to scheduling or something, would they be able to?
With the associates, there's a, there is an extensive planning piece, which, you know, and part of that is, for instance, students have to, the expectation for Massasoit is that students will go to Massasoit every day during their junior and senior year. That's a, so we have to ensure that students have met their local grad requirements and that, and then when they go to Massasoit, students are, have to follow the Massasoit Community College schedule. So they're not on the BPS schedule. That was one of our lessons learned this semester, even with students going to Mass, the ESL students going to Massasoit. So if students were to transfer, I mean, if they were to transfer out of the district or to another school, like two things. If they were to transfer out of the district, then we wouldn't be essentially paying, Brockton Public School would not be paying for that. So the student would have to work it out with the new district. If they were transferred to another school within the district, high school within the district, we could support that. We could support that and work with the leaders at the school and, because they should have already met their local grad requirements to continue to earning the associate's degree.
So our first group of graduates, when are we looking to see our first group of graduates with the associates?
It would be, it's gonna be four or five years, in terms of, one, we haven't officially rolled it out. So once we are aligned and ready, and then students know and parents know really the magnitude of earning the associate's degree, ensuring that our one-to-one courses are there, so our English comp, our math courses, all of those are met. But what I will say is that, in one of, the slide when I talked about some of the successes, so one of the courses was the medical assistant, which we, BPS is an innovative pathway district, and that is under the auspices of Dr. Elvio Ferreira. And Early College supported it because of the transition with Sean Desmond leaving last year, and so having a partner teacher support that. But two of those students, from the six, two of those students actually took their final yesterday to receive a micro credential as a medical office assistant. And so when we talk about sort of this, this graduation, graduating and finishing and completing, so those two seniors will, will, will end with a micro credential, which means they can take those credits and apply them to, to other full credentials within the community college scope. So we don't have, in terms of what we piloted with UMD last semester, this semester, we don't have students yet who have completed what we call the major in that pathway, and that's really meeting the significant credits towards, you know, towards a major. But we have students, this submit, I mean, as I indicated, we have twenty students taking two courses. And so that's pretty significant, that students are trying to, to, to really get some of these credits and this experience.
It's a wonderful program, and I'm excited to keep seeing it grow. So for the next few years, we're gonna just keep an eye on this. And like I said, this has given a lot of students an opportunity. I know it took me years to pay off my student loans, so it's given them a jump start. And it's, it's another, another thing that's gonna make Brockton, you know, shine a little more than other schools that are around us when we offer this program to our students. So thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azak.
I just quickly wanted to make a comment. So I was reading about the opportunity myth, and this just like brightens my heart because it's really much the exposure part of just having our students able to have this exposure. And I saw that they were able to go through a guide of college. I remember my senior year, I was going through a guide. I had no idea how to go through it. When I had to withdraw from a college course and I had to take a fifth course to be able to finish on time. So it's just, that exposure is just incredible to see, and enrollment numbers increasing. When you talk about the scheduling challenge and just like designated space, I know in our agenda, we have the MSBA update, but that could be a wonder, right, of like when we have the new Brockton High? Because I think it's important to keep them in this building because it's cool to have that internalization of I am a Brockton High student, but I am doing an early college or dual enrollment course. So I think that's really important. And then in just regards of one question that I do have, but I do want to give a good shout, a huge shout out to your, the Office of Early College and also to you, Dr. Bloom, and the other doctor listed here, McNeil Pleasant, because this is just, honestly, it's just awesome to be able to see this and hopefully have our numbers continue to increase. But the question that I have is, one, do all colleges take this credit? I know sometimes that gets very, that gets complicated, like if they decide to go to a different college that is not here, like Massasoit, UMass Dartmouth, et cetera. And then what happens if they do not, they can't transfer these college credits?
Absolutely. So we are saying that the, the, all Commonwealth public institutions, these are transferable credits. So it's going to a private institution, for instance, they may not accept the credit. One thing that we tell students is that what you have put on your college resume, let's say you want to go to Wheaton, because I went there. And what you're saying is, you know what, I've been doing this, and, and I have what it, you know, what it takes to do that. And I think it's really on, behooves the Commonwealth to have that broader IHE discussion on accepting credits across, from Massasoit, from UMass Dartmouth for students at early college, regardless of the, the in-state institution that students go to.
Yeah. So I like how you said that exposure of just being able to have that belief that I can do this. I noticed that there's only about four courses that allow freshmen to do it. A lot of them start with sophomore. And the reason why I raise this point is because MCAS, usually students take sophomore year, and it's a requirement they need to be able to have their high school diploma. So just starting that, that exposure for freshman year, is there any way we can increase the courses so freshmen can take, so by the time they're sophomore year, they could be like, I got this, like I can do this? And maybe, I don't know, that has some correlation with increasing our scores for MCAS?
We can, some institutions will, for instance, UMD is willing to accept students in ninth grade at, say, English comp or psychology or sociology, if we are willing to put the student forward and say, you know, we, here are wraparound services, and students are prepared and feel ready to do it. Really, the reason we start in the tenth grade, so in ninth grade, that, that first semester, students can take the early college experience and really getting into the program, onboarding of the program, some, some college visits, and then they are able to take and sign up for speech in the second semester. That's how we've modeled it. And really looking, because those are the developmentally appropriate courses. We wouldn't want necessarily a student to take a UMD course on politics, sexuality and gender until they are in the eleventh grade, twelfth grade, and, and in conversations, we're actually offering that, that course this semester. I mean, in conversations, we, with the, with the faculty member, you know, there are times when, when I'm there to ensure, because the conversation can be a little tough, and that we can support students with adjustment counselors. So we're thinking of all those things as well. Developmentally, it's students in that ninth grade may not be ready for the sociology or the psychology, but can definitely take a, in English comp one. It's available as an opportunity if that conversation comes up, but model-wise, we just haven't built it, built it in for the ninth grade. But we're looking at as students enter the tenth grade, introduction to criminology, introduction to business, comp, English comp one, some of the other, some of those other courses as well, because we know they're now beginning to really just be developmentally ready, acclimated to high school and that sort. So we wanted to give students the time for adjustment. But it is possible that a student in ninth grade can take a course. For instance, there is a, there is a ninth grade student taking a, one of the courses with eleventh and twelfth graders. I think it's the speech course.
Awesome. I would love to see that course in action, the one that you mentioned, gender, race and sexuality. I don't know if we're able to visit at all, but I would love to hear students having that Socratic, that Socratic thinking in dialogue that is encouraged in college courses. So I would love to see that. Thank you for answering all my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Menes. Any additional questions for Dr. Boone? Mr. Sullivan followed by Mr. Rodriguez, please.
No question. I'll be real quick, just a comment. I thought when you had ten students, went to eighty-seven was fabulous, but the four hundred and fifty to five hundred is unbelievable. I just wanted to thank you and your office for doing a great job. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised if Desi looks at you and says, let's start this pilot program right here and move it around the whole state. You've got a great, great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rodriguez, please.
Thank you. I attended the event at West about two months now. So what do we actually, what's the plan of like actually marketing this and making sure that this program is actually knocking on the doors of all the students in the city? I had mentioned, you know, we did it at West. Is there a plan of reaching all four middle schools to actually do the same presentation that we did have at West? Because there was a lot of, you know, parents that did reach out, they couldn't make it. So we could reach all the corners of the city so everybody can know what this actually entails.
Right. And the first page that, actually, if I go back, I'm sorry, you don't have the page, but Jess in marketing created this. This is our anticipated billboard that will be out in the Brockton, in front of Brockton High School, including one of the things we have been discussing is our early college website, you know, as we look towards large-scale marketing. I'll call them orientations, but around the city is definitely a possibility. And I think, I know that's something that Dr. Connors has expressed to both early college and to accelerated programs, the IB, AP, to do. And just being inundated with, you know, with getting students their interest, so, you know, for the fall partnerships. So we will continue to sort of branch out, if you will, to make sure that we are representing across the, across the city early college orientations for parents and students. And that in part is going to be a significant event, if you will, when we are onboarding students and introducing them to, if you will, their IHEs that they will, that they will be partnering with in the fall. So it's really gonna all look, you know, look the same, but we just haven't set a date for when to have the next informational.
Mike, is it possible, I don't know if Jess is here, can we actually include this into our marketing segment that we got going on?
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Homer, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, one comment, too. You mentioned that the students had already started to express interest in enrolling in the courses, too. I know for the most part, students are starting to select courses for next year. Is there a deadline for the students to register if they maybe hadn't chosen yet, but maybe for parents or people watching, members of the audience who might want to reconsider, or students that want to reconsider? Is there a deadline when they would have to register and complete any enrollment? What's, what's that onboarding process look like in terms of filling out applications to become a dual enrollment student? And is it different for UMass Dartmouth or for Massasoit?
Yes, everyone has a different enrollment sheet and date, which is another sort of right policy thing coming, sort of streamlining. Students, if a student starts the fall and says, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to take an early college course, we can enroll them when we're roughly working within. we can enroll them when we're roughly working within, in terms of enrolling, three to five days once the class starts. So we are working with our partners to enroll students in May. And so we're all sort of smarter, you know, all our IHEs, BPS, in terms of saying, for instance, one of our partners, when we were enrolling students, needed things, but gave us the enrollment form in the final classes six days before the end of last sem, spring semester last year. And that, you know, is too late for, for us. So we are working within sort of the standard operating procedures and of timelines of getting things in and getting, and getting them done. Again, it's, you know, the reason, part of the reason we did the, the early interest was because the IHEs need to start trying to get faculty. And so, and we don't actually enroll until this, at this process. So we're now firming them up, seeing we've said, here are preliminary numbers. And so students have until, until the fall, three or four days after the class will start. UMass Dartmouth starts earlier than Massasoit. So UMass Dartmouth starts, they started the day actually last year, or like at least in spring, I'm sorry, in fall, they started the day we, BPS started. MCC started two weeks later, right? So we've, we, we sort of need to, you know, work and try and get students enrolled as soon as possible, but students have that timeframe, that timeframe. And then, of course, it just helps the scheduling in the schools because part of that is, you know, that when, when we have to enroll students later and we get the information late from our IHEs, it can potentially cause a lot of havoc in scheduling and moving students' schedules around. And so there were students, you know, who wanted to, with our pilot, for instance, that was going to Massasoit, who wanted to take the class and they couldn't because their schedules, they just couldn't be, you know, turned around. So, so we're all sort of trying to work in concert with, with each other, you know, at the very multiple levels.
So just to piggyback on that point, that was my, one of my second questions here was for the dual enrollment courses, so not the early college program, but dual enrollment courses. In a case like that where a student can't fit the class into the daytime schedule, does the class need to be completed in the daytime hours, the regular school hours? Or could a student complete a dual enrollment course afternoon time, evening time? Or even like in a summer session? Is that part, is that funded and is that cost built in? Is that part of an agreement with the IHEs that if you can't do it here during the daytime because your, your schedule doesn't allow it, can you, can you still be a dual enrollment student in the afternoon or the evening?
You could. So dual enrollment, you know, one of the, as I, you know, wanted to, as I mentioned, dual enrollment in its traditional sense is not something we engage in really in the district. Dual enrollment, when you think of it, it's a student who generally does have to meet certain prerequisites, taking a course and that course, they're usually taking it with other college age students. And for instance, there was a parent at the, at that informational who came up to me and said she is returned to school. She's at Massasoit. She's taking an English Comp course. And the other students in the course are from Braintree, or Braintree High School. And so that's dual enrollment. And I often argue, you know, when we put, when we have a cohort of high school students, our students, and we paid for the course, it's not dual enrollment. Our expectation is that those students will take additional courses to get to at least 12 credits. But Massasoit does have and offer dual enrollment for the summer. And so Malicious Shepherd, the guidance coordinator, has been, has been working with counselors for students who are interested in dual enrollment classes this summer. Those students will most likely be in classes with college age students, not in cohorts with high school students. And Massasoit does pay for that. They have funding through, through their CDEP and some of their other funding sources to do that. We are trying summer courses that are cohorts for our students and that we support them in as well, our students support them in during those college courses.
All right. Last, yeah, that was great. That's great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for people watching at home too. Last question, Bridgewater State and Worcester State. In terms of offerings or planned offerings, expectations, I know from the material you provided and what we see, we have pathways in place. Is there any expected difference or something that we're working on with those other partner programs? Or I know generally those courses must fall within the scope of that early mass transfer block of courses and they all generally fulfill those general requirements. Is there something different that Worcester's offering or that Bridgewater's offering? Or is it just an opportunity to build another cohort with a professor from one of those other institutes to kind of meet our capacity?
I would say the latter, to meet our capacity. Now Bridgewater State University has about 300 students. They're anticipating for early college courses in the fall. But they have agreed with BPS to pilot two courses. Those courses will probably be along the mass transfer, so the English Comp Sociology. That will help with our overflow. And then next year, we will talk with them about pathways and then do a designation with, with them. Worcester State would operate in the capacity of being an overflow institution and to support either virtual, in-person courses as well. We can't, we can't take students to the campus for classes. But like UMD, if students are in there, we will take them for, you know, one or two visits. We did two weeks ago, a visit to UMD with the UMD students. They had breakfast. They sat in the class. So trying to make that connection.
All right. And then just a thank you again for the, the point you made about linking the Medical Translating Certificate Program that we already have with that. I mean, I think those students are already exhibiting that tenacity and that skill that if they haven't already started jumping on. I hope that students that are in that program are looking to continue that because they can apply those skills so well in, in much needed fields that might require a college degree. So they're already really exhibiting what, what it takes to be successful and I hope that they take good advantage of that. But thank you for including that in your presentation.
And this is just the other piece, quick piece, is that in terms of after-school courses, Desi really for early college wants to see it during the school day. And that's really what they're designating and, and funding. And there were some, I know, real disappointments with some high schools this past year that did not get designation. And, and in conversations with, with particularly two of them, they really think it's because it's not, under this sort of scope of what Desi is saying. BPS is in that scope and that's the access to all of, to, to, to early college classes, to all of our students across this, you know, potentially, completely across the six high schools that we have. And, and then these significant wraparound services to supporting students.
Thank you, Mr. Homer. Any follow-up, Mr. Rodriguez?
Just another one. I know at, at the governor's level, she's trying to implement, you know, free college at the community, community schools, college level. And then if you look at just, you know, attending our John Abigail recipients, with, you know, we had over 100 plus. And having this extra tool, you know, the financial piece of it, it's, it's huge. You know, specifically in the, in the community that we serve, you know, being an urban community, this is like phenomenal. Like I, I wish that this was, I know we're kind of behind, but I wish this was when I was in school. You know, so this is, this is huge. This is huge. Because I was one of those kids that were, I'm all done, you know, I'm 12, that's, that's it, you know. And, but to have this and, you know, you know, times change, to actually educate these kids more of going to higher ed and saying, here's all the tools, use them, you know, show them how to use them. Not just say, oh, this is what we have and just wait for a parent. Because, you know, a lot of parents, you know, specifically in this community are working two, three jobs and, and sometimes they, they lose focus and track on what their child is actually doing. Oh yeah, you're passing. Who cares? But they don't know that they actually have that little piece that they're struggling or you going to college. Because it's not always, you know, graduating, just go to work. And thank you for your, for your services and all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any final thoughts? Thank you, Dr. Boone.
Sean, stay there one second. I got, because I'm going to brag on you. Well, I mean, so I, I mean, he's like the son I never had, so I'm going to brag on him. So he's, he is the best trip to the Italian kitchen I ever made. So I went to the Italian kitchen with, two years ago, I think it was two years. It was in the middle of the pandemic. And I saw his brother, who I went to school with, Sean's younger than I. And his brother told me that Sean was interested in coming back to the East Coast from LA. So he connected me with him, cell phone numbers and emails. And I was able to, I'm going to give myself a pat on the back, that I was able to recruit Sean back here to do this work because I knew back then that the work was really going to take off. And the state was really, we were getting word through our superintendent meetings with Jeff Riley that more money was coming into early college because the state was being criticized for how far behind they were to other states who are not at the level of Massachusetts with their educational system. So, but the work that he has done with the team that he's working with and with the guidance counselors and the schools has just been amazing work. So he is a gem and I hope he decides to stay with us for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for.
Thank you, Dr. Boone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
And I had a good chicken parm sub that day too. Extra sauce. All right. So next, we're going to have Mr. Sean Precious come down, our Assistant Superintendent of Accountability, Data and Accountability, to give us a quick MCAS update. As you know, the MCAS season started last week. And Sean is just going to give a quick update on how things are going, especially with the technology, as you know, that MCAS is all online. So Sean, take it away and welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. So as you all know, MCAS testing has begun. The first window in April is our English Language Arts Testing. May is Mathematics and late May, early June is Science. Historically, again, as you all know, our participation rates are very strong. We've got approximately 98% of eligible students completing all assessments. And all of our assessments now are computer-based. We've got approximately 10 students or so that are still on paper-based due to accommodations. But the vast majority of our students are all computer-based testing. Last week, we kicked off testing with our 10th graders. I was right here at Brockton High School last Tuesday morning. Shout out to Principal Burns and her team. It was incredibly well organized and very smooth. And as you all know, they test nearly 1,000 students. So that's great. We also completed testing at all of our 912 pathways, including Brockton Virtual Learning Academy. This week, we began testing ELA in grades three through eight across the district. 10 schools were testing today. So we've got the Arnone, the Baker, Brookfield, Davis, East, George, the Kennedy, Plouffe, Raymond and West. We're all testing today. We've been receiving multiple positive reports from schools all over the district, from school staff, from administration and our central teams, that testing has been going really, really smooth. Most importantly is the impact that we're hearing from students. They're working diligently and really focused on showing us what they know. So excited about that. We've also developed campaigns with schools and families emphasizing the importance of trying your best, getting good rest before testing and reading, reading, reading at home to continue to improve student performance. Tremendous gratitude, and I see Tracy back there, to our tech services team led by Dan Vigent, our student assessment support team, which is led by Ethan Cancel and Kevin Dupont, and multiple staff members across teaching and learning, our Office of Student Support Services and our bilingual departments for four months of rigorous behind the scenes planning. And of course, a huge shout out to our school staff, especially our testing coordinators, our teachers and proctors, and most importantly, our students and their families. Go BBS. That is the most enthusiastic I can give you an update on in terms of MCAS. It doesn't get any better than that, y'all.
Any questions at all at this time? Great summarization. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
So next, I'm going to have Dr. Cobb come up and join us. And we're just going to go over an update with the MSBA and the Brockton High School application. So just some dates we need to, to get to you. This past March 31st, the mayor and I had assigned an initial compliance certificate, which was executed. It's just a formal document that we're in the program. It's just a signature on school, school letterhead that goes to them by March 31st. The next most important deadline is May 1st. So the mayor has to decide of the school building committee that will oversee the high school. This is going to be a committee made up. There's members that they have to put on, like a member of the school committee, city council, CFOs from both the school and city side, the superintendent, the building department head on the city side, obviously Dr. Cobb's, and someone from the facilities department. But also the mayor can also increase the number of elected officials that, that serve on that committee. And I believe he'll do that because of the size of the project. So you'll have more than just, it calls for one school committee member, one city counselor. But because of the project is so big, he has expressed that he would appoint other, more members each to that committee. And that's a committee that will meet pretty much, you know, it's probably going to change over the years because the time the committee meets and the time it finishes is going to be about seven or eight years. So I'm sure they'll be changing members as we go through. But, you know, that's our next step that has to be submitted to the MSBA by May 1st. But we can, the mayor can also add or change people out during the time of the committee. And then also, the next big deadline is we have to do an enrollment questionnaire, enrollment projection for Brockton High School. That's due on May 30th. And then we have to finalize another enrollment report that needs to be certified by August 28th. And then going down and for the feasibility study, which is the study that we have to enter into with the MSBA, that has to all be completed. It has to be voted on by the school committee, sent to the city council to enter into the feasibility stage. That is by November 27th. So we still have a lot of time for that. However, that needs a formal vote from the school committee. It will go to facilities subcommittee first, school committee full, and then to the city council. Feasibility studies for this size could anywhere between $2 and $3 million. So that money has to be approved by November 27th by the city council. So those are the immediate timelines. Dr. Cobb's can weigh in on the conversations he has with the MSBA, but that's right now, the, the dates and timelines. And I will send this in Friday's packet so you have a, you have the official notification from the MSBA. So Dr. Cobb, speak, who was it? Allison, is she?
Allison Sullivan. So that, you pretty much summed up, you know, what the process is. Not much else to add to it. The only thing I'll add is the, I pretty much finished the draft of the building school committee, building committee members that I'll send to you and then to you too, so you can add to it and approve. So we'll have that ready well before the May 1st deadline. So you should have that, you know, I'll review with you on Thursday, we'll meet and then probably next week, you'll have a draft of, and so you can add whoever you want to add to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I will put the required, like the people that have to be on there that are, that are not elected officials that represent the city CFO, both CFOs, the building commissioner, which would be Jim Plouffe. I think there usually is a member of the fire department as well. So, yeah, so there's, there's, you know, the members that you have to put on and then obviously elected officials. And Dr. Cobb, are you working with Jess about the, now an educational plan that will have to be submitted as well?
That's the next step. So what, once I get this, this document ready, we'll, we'll go into the educational plan, which the big piece of it is chapter 74 projections of what we want to do. So I'll be working with LVO and Public Safety to figure out what's next for that. But we're on track. We're moving forward with it. So we're, you know, I like to get things well ahead of that time. So like we did with the last, the compliance certificate, we got it a week ahead of time. So that's with the MSBA right now. They're reviewing it for their approval. So when we get it approved, we get it back, I'll let you know.
Yeah. And the goal would be to be before city council, well before the November 27th deadline. Hopefully get it approved sometime in October as far as the funding for the feasibility study. So what the feasibility study is, is basically that allows you to hire an architect and engineers, such an architectural firm that basically will go in and do a full study of Brockton High School. They test everything from floors to structure, to roof, the grounds, you know, every part. They, all the mechanics of the building. And they pretty much do a very, it's a two-year process that they do a thorough investigation of the building. They interview several stakeholders inside of the school system and outside of the school system. And then they come to you where they, they attend all those SBA meetings, which they will have with the school building committee. And they will basically tell you at the end of the at the end of that whether you're renovating this one or building a new one or building two buildings that's connected by a bridge. I mean, that's all the options that they'll give you. And then obviously, it's up to the city to decide what, you know, what path you take. But they will let you know what is the most cost-effective way to either update, renovate, or build new. That's the process. So, we're, we've got a long way to go. Vice Chairwoman.
Just a quick question. Is Allison designating, I can't remember from the last call, do they tell us who we should use to do the feasibility study or do we get to pick who does the feasibility study?
You get to interview up to three. So, as that building committee is put together, then you, as a building committee, interview up three that are on their list that are actually DCAM certified. And you interview them. And basically, you decide, the committee decides by a vote who to hire in that situation.
Thanks.
Rodriguez.
Mayor, are we able to submit that feasibility price tag to Plymouth County?
No. That doesn't meet the standards of ARPA.
Okay.
I like it, did. Wish I could.
I know. I know.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb? Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Yeah, it's a lot of, Dr. Cobb gets all the paperwork. So, and it comes fast and furious. Yep. So, next, we'll have Aldo come up just to give us an update on what he presented tonight. Al, you can actually sit right there if you want to make sure you turn the mic on. So, we had an update at our finance subcommittee meeting tonight at 6:30 on next year's budget. Right now, we're waiting for the House to come out with their version, which hopefully will be within the next couple of weeks. So, we can start to really build the budget.
Correct. So, we received the governor's budget a few weeks back. It was late this year. So, that's why we think the House budget, which is usually out by mid-April, will probably be a little bit later this year. In the current, in the proposal by the governor, we're receiving some additional Student Opportunity Act money. Our budget's larger. But at the same time, we're losing all of our federal ESSR monies that will be winding out this year. So, we're waiting to see what those numbers are. The governor issued a supplemental budget just a few days ago because all the school districts around are complaining that there was an increase allowed of all the outside placement agencies that handle our special education students out of house of 14%, which is usually about 2% to 3% each year. So, that increase is quite a strain on many budgets. A budget like ours is over $1 million in additional costs. The governor announced a couple of days ago, she was issuing a supplemental budget to hopefully either hold us harmless on that, basically by giving us enough funds for it or just give us additional funds towards it. The amounts haven't been broken out by each different school district. So, hopefully in the next few days, we'll receive that. And we'll begin, you know, building our budget from there. Our enrollment has declined, again, for a third year in a row. We're down well over 1,000 students the past three years. Just this past year, down 356 students, which is about $7 million. So, that's going to give us some tightening of the belt on this budget. We're going to look to realign our staffing to our student enrollment levels. You know, as you lose students, you have to basically pull back on your staffing levels to go along with it. So, over the next week or two, once we receive those figures, we'll finish compiling a budget. And I'll bring a detailed proposal to the school committee so we can begin reviewing it basically line by line or page by page to see what our plans are for next year.
Any questions relative to that, to Aldo? I will let you know that Council President Sunda Castro has indicated that the budget will be Monday, the 13th of June, Tuesday, the 14th, Wednesday, the 15th, and she'll have a placeholder for Thursday, the 16th. So, it will be June 13, 14, 15, definitely. Not sure when the schools will be called, but I'll work with the president and find that out.
Thank you.
And then last for me is any items to refer to subcommittee.
Any matters at this time to go to subcommittee?
I would say, I would recommend a facility subcommittee meeting, again, because we have some decisions to make about facilities that we are leasing currently and decisions that we need to make on them for next year. So, I think we, and then anything else that anybody on that subcommittee wants to submit for an agenda item, just feel free to give those to, I believe it's Kathy. So, the members of that committee, if you can let her know other items that you want on that facility subcommittee meeting, and then we can, you can work together to schedule when it will be. And then just whatever you all you want on. But I think one thing we have to do is talk about current leases that we have and decisions we have to make for next year.
Time now or?
What's that? I'm fine with you guys staying, getting together for a time. I have See, under my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. That was great. We will go into Agenda Five. And I want to let you know, once I read into the record that Attorney Mello has given us, and we've talked about this, I think, the last three meetings, maybe this is the third meeting. We are going to be changing the bid review subcommittee. Again, it's going to include all seven members. The vice chair will serve as chair. I will not be on it. But let me just read into the record because Peter had asked me to. Discussion and potential vote, votes pursuant to school committee policy, BGB, policy adoption to address proposed amendments to school committee policies, BDE, Subcommittee of the School Committee, BEDC, Quorum, and DHA Contract Signing Authority, along with any other school committee policy changes necessitated thereby, which proposed amendments would modify Subcommittee Quorum requirements, limits on Subcommittee membership, the composition of the bid review Subcommittee, among other thing, among other related or associated revisions. So, again, when you look at the current policy, it does not allow for a seven-member Subcommittee Board. So, what Peter, what Attorney Mello had indicated to myself, to vice chair, and to Mike, is that this matter should be referred to the policy Subcommittee. Policy Subcommittee, as we make any type of changes to the rules and regulations of this party, would then refer back out to the full school committee. Now, on a dates perspective, if it's referred tonight, which is the 4th, we would respectfully need a policy Subcommittee to happen a week's, in a week's time. So, it would be next week on the 11th. Policy Subcommittee could be called that night. The following week is school vacation week again. So, that wouldn't be applicable the week of the 17th. But the 25th, which would be a special school committee meeting for the sole purpose of modifying the bid committee. So, again, what Attorney Mello said is for kind of belts and suspenders, referred to policy, which has always been the standard practice of the school committee. Policy would be called. The chair of the policy will call it. Again, we respectfully hope it would be, you know, Tuesday, the 11th at 6:00 or 6:30. And then that would be vetted out. The only matter on that agenda would be, again, this, which is just increasing the composition from X to Y, which will be a total membership of seven, with the vice chair serving as chair. And then that would come back out. And then I will call as chair, I'll call Special School Committee for 6:00 in this room on Tuesday, April 25th. And again, we do allow Zoom capability. So, if a member is not allowed to be here in attendance, we could still do that with a lawful vote. Any questions relative to that? So, if there's no questions, what Attorney Mello had asked us to do, again, just like any vote we take, there would have to be a motion to refer what was just stated to the policy Subcommittee to be a proper second, and then we'd have to take a vote on that. Is there a motion on the floor relative to that?
Motion to, sorry. Did you call? Let me start. Motion to approve the unfinished business to refer the change in the bid review composition and refer to the policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Mrs. Sullivan. It's pretty close. It's pretty close. Tie goes a little runner. So, there's a motion on the floor. And again, just so everybody watching will understand, bid Subcommittee review because of, first of all, first of all, it's the right thing to do where all members are allowed to opine and vet out bids. It's just the right process. But the MSBA and the amount of money, you know, even on an 80-20 split, we're talking about $100 to $200 million. So, there are going to be a lot of endeavors that the bid Subcommittee is going to need to do within the next several years. There's no doubt about that. So, again, there's a motion on the floor. It was properly seconded. It was motion, motion was made by Kath, Mrs. Ayler, it was properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan, all in favor of referring this matter to the policy Subcommittee. All opposed? It's referred to the policy Subcommittee. Who's to chair? Is that you, Ms. Azak, the chair of the policy?
I'm Policy Manual.
Everybody's on policy.
Okay. So, you would act and you would call it. And again, what Attorney Mello thought it should be a week from tonight to give us enough time. Does that, does that work for you, Vice Chair, to call it? Okay.
Yes.
So, again, it would be, it's up to you if you wanted 6:00, 6:30, 7:00. But it's only the sole purpose of this matter. We will have Attorney Mello here in attendance as well.
If he's been covered.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, I'll
Somebody will do Zoom with him.
Can I, question? So, if we're going to be here on the 11th, can we just have facilities done that night? If we're going to be here anyways?
It's a great idea.
Good for me.
Yeah. Might as well just, if we're going to be here.
So, Melinda, you would just have to get your agenda items for facilities to Kathy by Thursday. So, Melinda can post Friday morning. Right, Melinda?
Thank you. Then on the 25th, I'll call Special School Committee for 6:00 here because Aldo and superintendent need finance at 6:30. And that's probably going to be an hour or so for that meeting.
Yep.
So, we'll have two matters that evening as well. We could go on to Agenda Number Six right now, which is new business. Is there any new business of the membership? I would like to say within the last 24 hours, it's been historic in the city of Brockton. The fact that Cape Verdean President Nevz joined us here, I want to thank Jess. I want to thank Principal Burns. I want to thank superintendent, all the school committee members, all the staff, and more importantly, the students. To have a president from a foreign nation come here is unbelievable. I had the fortune to sit with him last night for dinner, and he was still raving about the singing, the ROTC, and the students and the engagement. And I just said to him, that's what Brockton High is all about, Mr. President. So, again, awesome. That was just an awesome day. And again, a lot of work went into that. So, I want to thank everybody. And then today, the Robert C. Jones Building was dedicated. Mr. Jones was there. And I want to thank you, superintendent. I know you worked diligently on that. The Champion High School, which is on Summer Street, the building that we acquired, is now known as the Robert C. Jones. So, I'd like you to opine on as well, Mike, because that was just a wonderful, Tony was there, Joyce was there, Judy was there. It was awesome.
Yeah, it was great. Mr. Jones, former superintendent, as the school committee voted back, I believe in February, to honor him with naming the building at 661 Center Street. Our new building that houses the Champion High School after Robert C. Jones, who, again, was a trailblazer, graduate of Tufts, you know, Brockton High graduate, graduate of Tufts, is the only person of color in that graduating class, ran track and field. He's going to be inducted on June 9th.
June 9th.
June 9th, will be inducted into the Tufts Hall of Fame. So, we were going to, we were planning on having this event. So, my apologies that the, you know, we weren't able to get all the invites out to some people because this was supposed to be in May. But his family informed us that just a week and a half ago, that he was not doing well. And we needed to move this up. And it had to be a time during the middle of the day, which is a good time for him. However, he's, you know, he's kind of sprung back. And he's really looking forward to his Hall of Fame induction on the 9th. So, it was a great day for him. And his son, Guy Jones, who's a longtime, longtime custodian with the Brockton Public Schools, was able to join us. His grand, a couple of his grandkids were there. And just, you know, Phyllis Ellis was there from the NAACP, Willie Wilson, who supplied the letter to the school committee requesting that the, that building be named after Mr. Jones. So, it was just
School Committee, Ozzy Jordan.
Ozzy Jordan, yes. Yes. It was good to see him.
Also, his class president.
1941, class of 41.
Oh, really?
Class of 41 president was also there this morning.
Oh, yes.
His friend. So, he actually, I'm not sure where he came from.
That was Nelson?
Yeah.
And this is named after him, right? Is that his, was his father?
He married Mr. Nelson's daughter.
Okay. All right.
One thing that was amazing is we met all the great students. I want to thank Principal England. Sue's great. But we had two, two class officers come and shake hands and meet Mr. Jones. At the conclusion, he provided each one of those young men a $5,000 scholarship right there on the spot. So, that just speaks volumes of who Bob Jones is, the man. And, you know, God love him, he's going through health battles, but he's giving back to kids right until the end. So, it was just, it was an awesome day. So, thank you, Mike.
Yeah. And he said he was leaving, he's establishing $100,000 to leave in an endowment for the Champion School to give scholarships, you know, long, long, you know, time. Hopefully, he's with us for a lot longer so he can see those students. But I also want to thank Dr. Cobb, who really scrambled to get sign design there to install the sign. Because again, it wasn't ready to go up until May, but he put the rush job on for them to get it up. So, we thank him and just everybody that was a part of this. It was a great, it was a great time.
Awesome. Mrs. Sullivan, follow by Ms. Azak, please.
Also, his white daughter-in-law was there, Mrs. Jones, who was a grade one teacher at the Downey School. And also afterward, we went in with him and he toured the school and I toured the school with him, with the principal. And he was able to go into classrooms there and speak to students. So, the students got to meet the man that the school is named after, which is a really awesome thing. Because a lot of times, a building is donated, named after someone, and the kids never get to meet the person. So, it was really awesome. And like, he really got into talking to the students, as you know, he would. But yeah, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you for being there, Mrs. Sullivan. Ms. Azak, please.
So, I just wanted to comment, yesterday's event with the president from Cape Verde, you know, we have an amazing culinary program. And they put on such an amazing, the pastries and, and I wasn't there for the luncheon, but I saw some of the photos. So, just wanted to thank them. And we definitely need to grow that culinary program. And then so many students, I heard stories that they were so excited. You know, this is, for a lot, this is a once in a lifetime to see the president of Cape Verde at your school, you know, for a lot of our Cape Verdean community. So, it was exciting for them. It was exciting to meet him. Wonderful man. So, it was wonderful to be able to spend some time. And as far as today's event, I could just listen to Mr. Jones. You're listening to history in person. And just the stories he was telling, I mean, I would love, they used to do like profiles of courage, I think it was years ago with JFK. But just record him, record the stories. You know, this is, our students need to listen to him, listen to, I think it was his son, superintendent, that mentioned that back when he was at North Junior High, he dealt with a lot of the troubled students, I believe. And here he is, the building, not that they're troubled, but students that need a little extra attention. And here we, here we are naming the Champion School. So, just the stories from throughout the years and things like that. But it was wonderful to be able to, a lot of people mentioned, recognize someone while they're still with us and be able to listen to him and hear his story. So, he's a fascinating, fascinating man. And we're lucky to be able to, be able to celebrate with him today. So, hopefully, we can, we can hear about June. You know, the countdown's on for June. He's excited about that. So, wishing him luck.
That's right. Thank you again. Any additional comments at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Ms. Azak, probably seconded by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It carries. Drive careful.